Good afternoon and welcome to the City of International Falls City Council Meeting for Monday, September the 18th. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the fight.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would ask the city administrator to note the roll call with Councillor Droba and Councillor Pearson absent. Move to the agenda and we have three additions to the agenda under new business, item number seven, the sale of a support vehicle. Item number eight, it would be a resolution approving a grant agreement for the airport improvement projects. And item number nine is a resolution approving the Minnesota Department of Transportation grant agreement for the terminal expansion phase two.
I would move on the agenda with the additions.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to approve the agenda with the additions.
Second.
Second by Councillor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion for the agenda. Question.
Aye.
Now vote yes, motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the additions. Thank you. Go to the minutes of the Tuesday, September the 5th, regular city council meeting.
Who to approve, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw, second by Councillor Briggs to approve the minutes as presented. Discussion. I would, I would ask under page five, motion to approve the Human Resources Committee Recommendation on the Solutions Insurance Agency. About two-thirds of the way down in the statement, Councillor Briggs thought it would benefit the city by staying with Northern Reliable Insurance Agency because their business is in International Falls and employs three individuals. I would just ask consideration if we might also have there and that the proposal, the other proposal would have sent monies to a Duluth Insurance. It might just help to clarify what Councillor Briggs had said there.
It's okay with me.
Approval from the maker to the second?
No.
The second.
I will second the motion to amend the minutes. Discussion on the amendment.
Aye.
No.
I will vote yes, motion is carried with two for and one against amendment. And we have the minutes. Further discussion on the minutes? Question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, minutes are approved as amended. Move to the payment of claims, transfers. Motion by Councillor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Councillor Jacksaw to adopt a resolution approving the transfer payment The transfers include to the general fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, eighteen thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars, to the permanent improvement fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, twenty-five thousand, and to the reserve for capital outlay from the Water and Sewer Fund, seventeen thousand four hundred twenty-eight. The accounts payable claims, the City of International Falls, six hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred two dollars and thirty-two cents. Airport commission claims of eight hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-five cents, and Labor Board claims of four thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. We have a motion and second. Discussion on the payment of claims or transfers.
The only thing I have to comment on that was the ambulance fund is four hundred and eight thousand in the whole. So concerned about that. And Ken, you had made a comment earlier, do you care to comment on that at all?
Yeah, looking at our contractor's statement most recently received about a week ago, it shows our accounts payable, I'm sorry, accounts receivable number exceeding five hundred thousand. I don't have the exact number in mind, so our receivables exceed the four hundred and eight thousand dollar shortfall as it shows in an ending balance for the ambulance fund.
So that's the, so the, so we're recording the revenues when we get them rather than when we bill them. So, that's why we have the negative. Because if we were recording them when we billed them and there was these outstanding billings, then we would be showing a positive balance there, right?
That's correct. And usually with Medicaid reimbursements and other insurance company reimbursements, there's some costs that are ineligible, so we don't get 100 percent of what's billed, but they've been informed that the number is in the neighborhood of 90 percent.
And five hundred ninety, okay. So we should be about 50,000 to the good after all that comes in net of what we expect to get.
Okay, further questions or discussions with regard to the resolution or the transfers and the payment of claims? Are there none question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, transfers and payment of claims are approved. Thank you. Go to the audience, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Not, there's an opportunity at the close of the meeting for that to occur also, thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda. Approve the transfer expenses, including room and mileage, for the mayor to attend a meeting of greater Minnesota mayors to discuss the urban rural divide. That would be in Bemidji.
We can't have discussion on this because it's on the consent agenda, correct?
Correct.
Well gee, I want to pull it from the consent agenda because I'd like to discuss it.
Motion to...
Pull it.
Pull it from the consent.
Well, I intend to vote for it, I just want an opportunity to say something about this. I'm glad you're doing this.
I'll second it so you can.
Yeah, okay.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw, second by Councillor Briggs to pull this from the consent agenda.
I'm glad you're doing this, I see where it's a recommendation.
Question on the motion.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried.
I just want to say now that I'm glad you're doing this, I see where it's a recommendation from the League of Minnesota to do this. And so what's on the agenda again? What do you plan on?
There's going to be eight mayors from the Twin Cities and eight mayors from northern Minnesota discussing the urban rural divide that seems to be a focus in the legislature. And how to maybe reduce that difference.
So the metro, the metro area mayors are not small town then, they're lighter?
Likely they would be all urban.
Urban? Minneapolis?
Urban.
Minneapolis-St. Paul.
Okay, good, wonderful.
I would say it certainly gives us an opportunity to help.
Yeah, I mean, the cities have to hang together.
Seems like we don't get our fair share sometimes, that hopefully that with that discussion that they might be a little more open to help us out up here, you know.
Anyway, I thought it deserved a comment, you know, just a vote, so.
Then your pleasure with the question.
Aye.
Aye.
We haven't, we haven't had a motion yet.
Oh, so move.
I was just pulling it from the agenda, from the consent agenda. So now we, motion by Councillor Briggs to approve the travel expenses.
Second.
Second by Councillor Jacksaw. Further discussion? Question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion is carried, travel expenses approved, thank you. Move to new business. Item number one is show and camping and parade licenses approval for the proposed 2018 North Borders Rally in International Falls by the Christian Motorcyclist Association on July 25th through the 28th.
I'll vote.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Jacksaw. Discussion.
If there's any issues from the chief, I don't know they, we've had this a couple of times in the past and it seemed to be very well received and I think it brings revenue into the city because you get a number of people from out of town.
Like the theme, too.
Question, please.
I would just add that we haven't had any direct conversation other than the letter that we've received and, and so we'll want to have conversations about their proposed location and, and the logistics of the event. As I recall, they camped out at, literally at Smokey Bear Park for a night or two and then as well as throughout the community, and they did a lot of events over at the church in South Falls. So I think we, after we have our initial meetings with them, if there's anything that requires additional council approval, you might see it on a future agenda. We didn't have any issues with them when they were here last time.
They've been a very, very good group to have in the community.
They filled up the park over there, and a lot of tents over there then.
Further discussion? Question.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, approval is given for the proposed rally. Item number two under new business is to consider participation in the fiscal year 2016 Operation Stone Garden Grant Program. Chief Mastin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've included in your packets today the, kind of an outline of what the Stone Garden Grant would entail for the city. This isn't anything new to us, we participated in this, it's just basically augmenting the Border Patrol with their assigned duties. I wrote the grant for 2016, he asked if we'd be interested and I said we probably wouldn't. We're approved. I don't know, as a portion of that grant, I guess I'm just looking for...
Basically, just pay the overtime costs of the, our officers patrolling with them?
They pay our overtime costs, the fringe, and then we also get a mileage reimbursement for, that we utilize our own squads for.
There's no out-of-pocket or no overhead or anything that is impacting
That's right.
Our budget?
That's right.
Okay. Need a motion yet?
Yes, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw to approve the participation in the Operation Stone Garden Grant Program.
I only have one reservation, however.
I second.
Second by Councillor Briggs, Councillor Jacksaw.
I just have the reservation about burnout or too much overtime or, you know...
I understand that.
Or I've got a skinny...
It's a good reservation to have, but we've received such a, this is a small grant this time, a number of hours without being very taxing on the officers, they're very...
Quickly volunteer to...
Certainly volunteer, that's right.
Chief, I, in your, your letter to the council here, I think the last two sentences in that first paragraph are very, very important and I'm glad you made them. Close working relationship with other law enforcement agencies in our area and continued collaboration of assets and personnel that can only prove to benefit all involved. Very well stated, thank you. Further discussion? Question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, participation is approved in the grant program. Thank you. Item number three is to consider approval to add two existing analog phone lines, fire and ambulance to the existing Frontier Services Agreement dated November 11, 2016, for a cost savings of about 22 dollars per month, and to authorize signature of the mayor and administrator. The, I guess the chief isn't here. City Administrator, can you enlighten us? I, I tried to read through this and I, I couldn't make heads or tails out of it.
I second that.
There's some communication between staff and representatives at Frontier Communications and our deputy administrator had questioned them because the two analog lines that we have in the fire department and one's used for the fire department, one's used for the ambulance department, non-emergency lines, were not included in our government contract that we had signed, which had some lower rates. And so when we inquired about that, they indicated that they were not included, and so we're asking for you to authorize the mayor and myself to sign this particular agreement, and the result of that will be including those two lines on our government contract and it will save, again, approximately 22 dollars per month in our annual communication or our monthly communication costs.
Good to me.
I'll move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to approve.
I'll second.
And second by Councillor Jacksaw. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and approval is given for adding the two lines to the existing agreement. Thank you. Item number four under new business, consider approval of the AmeriPride Services Rental Service Agreement and authorize signatures. Please.
I've had some conversations with the representative from AmeriPride last week and he's requested that this be removed from the agenda or tabled so that we can bring it up at a future meeting. He indicated that they have new service agreements and terms in their service agreements that are coming out tomorrow, and he'd like to have an opportunity to present that to us and to the city council before we take action on this. He's already quoted a price of an increase of 3 percent in the first year and he said we won't exceed that, but, so he just wants to see what that, what the terms of the new rental service agreement will state, and he doesn't have a copy of it, it's supposed to be released tomorrow, and so we'd like this either tabled or probably tabled because it was left on the agenda, and then we'll bring it up at a future meeting when we have it.
I move to table.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw to table the consideration of the AmeriPride Service Agreement.
Second.
Second by Councillor Briggs. Question?
Do you have discussion on a motion to table?
I don't, I don't know that you can't, so. Are there none question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and item is tabled to a future meeting. Thank you. Item number five under new business is to consider a resolution requesting financial assistance from Koochian County for library services funding.
I move.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw, second by Councillor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the resolution.
First, I want to thank the city administrator Anderson for the research and the contacts and the work he did in putting together this resolution, something we should have done a long time ago.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted. Thank you. Item number six under new business is the Public Works Committee's Recommendations. Item A is to conditionally approve the Recreation Hockey Association's proposal to construct player boxes on the west side of the Cary Park Outdoor Arena. Those are to be purchased and installed by Becker Arena Products, subject to the Street and Water Commissioner's approval of the plans.
And this is at no cost to the city?
This would be paid for by the Recreation Hockey Association.
Right.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to approve.
Second.
Second by Councillor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion for the change at the Cary Park Arena. None question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and approval is given for those changes. Thank you. The second recommendation from the Public Works Committee is to approve the change in policy and discontinue use and relocation of picnic tables to private property, and furthermore to approve expenditure for an advertisement to inform the public of the change in policy.
I, I will support that motion to make that change in policy.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw to approve that change in policy.
Second.
Second by Councillor Briggs. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I assume we're doing this because of the background information given to us of the cost of having to repair them and everything else?
Yes, the, you know, committee had a lot of discussion on this. The city has been very open to having their picnic tables moved, hauled by individuals, trailers, trucks. They do incur some damage. About 40 percent of the tables need to be repaired on an annual basis, as it points out in the background information. And, and you know, we've allowed the picnic tables to go far and wide even to other communities in Koochian County, so, but the time has come to rein that in and the committee is recommending that we change that policy and no longer have the picnic tables leave the city property.
Well, I heard about it, about our picnic tables at the Labor Day picnic, about how they're, they're not all there, and so I, I certainly support this action.
I, I think it's a shame that we have to get to that point, but, but I fully understand. You know, you can't just keep letting people use them if they're going to destroy them.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, policy is amended then. Thank you. The last recommendation of the committee is the, approve the hiring of a part-time seasonal employee for the grounds maintenance after the summer part-time employees return to school, and that's also before the HR committee.
And as Chair of the HR, Brian and I met today along with the city administrator and Ted, and so he's recommending this, I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw, second by Councillor Briggs to allow the hiring of a part-time seasonal employee for grounds maintenance after the summer employees have returned to school.
There is one question though, maybe?
There is, there is, it would be contingent on city administrator Anderson, further discussion with PERA on the sole employment aspect of, of the, of the person being here, that is it, does it mean that that's the only job he can have? Or, and because it talks that he can only work 185 days in a year, does that mean the other 185, he can have another job, which it would make sense that he should be able to, but...
Councillor Briggs, after we met, I did have the occasion to talk to Ken, the city administrator, and he did clarify that with PERA, that it doesn't mean sole employee for that, sole, sole employment for the person that we're hiring. But, the other quirk on this is that there is some question because this particular individual that we're considering also works for the rec. commission, so that means Ken needs to pursue that question further, but along a different avenue. So we've resolved the problem of sole employment, that's been clarified, and it wouldn't impact the situation, but the fact that this individual has worked and continues to work for the rec. commission may pose a problem for us as far as PERA goes. So, the motion should be amended to say that pending clarification from PERA, that this would not impact our liability for that benefit. Right?
The motion would include then it being contingent on the PERA approval?
Not that we wouldn't be increasing our payments for that due to the seasonal position.
And for the public's information, it's, to understand why we're doing this is because the summer students are going back to school so early and then we have basically almost two months' worth of lawn mowing and other things that need to happen, and this individual could help our city crew through that after the summer students leave.
Actually, really probably won't increase our total payments in this area anyway because Ted had said at the meeting that in, in the past, the students had stuck around until, you know, later into the fall, but now they're all vanishing about August 11th. So this sort of fills in that gap for us. So it's not additional man-hours or women-hours, it's, you know...
We're getting caught short with nobody, and he's having to pull staff from other projects to do lawn mowing and other, on the parks.
Okay, everyone understands the motion then, that it'd be contingent on not increasing our PERA costs there? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and approval is given for the hiring of a part-time seasonal employee. With that contingency. Item number seven is the addition, and that's the sale of the cat support vehicle, it's a 1995 Suburban four-by-four. And you saw the memo in your packet that outlined that the sealed bids were received on September the 15th, and that upon tabulating the bids, that there was 13 bids that were received, and the high bid of 3,110 dollars from Mr. Mike Pearson. And so council would approve the sale of that support vehicle to Mr. Pearson at 3,110 dollars.
So move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs.
Second.
And by Councillor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the bids. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and the sale of that support vehicle to Mr. Pearson is approved. Thank you. Item number eight is a resolution approving the grant agreement for the airport improvement projects. That includes the rehabilitation of the payments on the runway and a triggering event master plan on the future improvements to the runway.
Move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Councillor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the resolution.
The triggering of a master plan, you're going to have to clue me in on the language here.
The triggering event master plan, or temp, T-E-M-P, is the Federal Aviation Administration requires, if you're going to rebuild your runway, which it's necessary given the amount of repairs that we've done to the main runway at the airport, 1331, in order to begin a rebuild, the FAA wants a master plan done, looking at the length of the runway, what needs to be done, how should it be done. Right now, the airport commission believes it would be done over a three-year period, where you would do one end of the runway, do the other end in the second year, and then do the middle in the third year. And the reason for doing that is to not have to shut down the airport for any lengthy period of time. The third year, when you're doing that center section, it will require probably... The third year, when you're doing that center section, it will require probably shutting the airport down for several weeks.
Several weeks?
For several weeks, and so we would hope to minimize that by doing the two outer sections. Also, our, our runway is 7,409 feet long, and the FAA questions why we need more than 7,000 feet. Given that we've already got 7,400, I'm sure they're going to approve that. And probably the last item, I think, for consideration, is what type of materials would we use? Would it be concrete? Would it be bituminous, again? What, what kind of material should be put into that runway rebuild? So they want all of that looked at very carefully through an engineering study, and then that would be reported to the FAA, and approval would hopefully be forthcoming to do the rebuild of that, of our runway, which would be good for another 20 years.
Is that plan separate from the other plan that you have, or is that the same thing?
Though there is a master plan for the entire airport.
Okay, that's another.
All aspects of the, but this would just be focused towards the runway.
And then I have to understand the, how this fits in with, don't we get a million dollars a year?
Yes.
That fit in with this?
The Federal Aviation, under the Airport Improvement Program, as long as your enplanements remain over 10,000 persons getting on the plane here each year, we are eligible for a million dollars for improvements at the airport. We would have to use our million dollars for that. The, the likelihood of that rebuild of that runway could run somewhere between 10 and 14 million. We will have to have discretionary funds from the Federal Aviation Administration to do that. The good fortune is that our airport is presently, and the county is under a hardship program, and so the cost would likely be no more than 5% of that expense.
Can you accumulate the million dollars, or do you spend it entirely every year? Is there any accumulation of funds?
You can accumulate up to three years of those, but even at that 13, or 10 to 14 million dollar project, we'd only have 3 million. So we're still looking at having to secure discretionary monies from the FAA, and they will do that for runways.
It's, you're obviously quite versed in this, and I appreciate that information, but I have another question. How much have we accumulated, if we have accumulated anything, as far, do we spend the million every year?
Yes.
We've been spending it every year, all of it?
We, we have borrowed to other airports, I believe it's, I want to say, it was 500,000 to Bemidji, and I think it was 150,000 to Grand Rapids, and that will be paid back next year by those airports to us. So we have spent all of our money except for that, and we didn't have a project at the time, and so that's why we loaned them some of our money, so that we could get, we could get it back when we needed it.
Because you lose it if you don't spend it in three years?
That's right.
Okay. I think that's all good information to understand.
And you kind of looked befuddled when he said several weeks that the airport would be down on that center section.
Well, yeah, we're worried about last round.
That would be something that our engineers will be looking at, where we would, you know, see what the costs are going to be to run 24/7, nor, they'll, the construction company run 24/7 to get it done, and we might be able to get it done in a couple of weeks. They do that, they've done that in Duluth, you know? Unfortunate thing for us is our cross runway isn't long enough for us to support SkyWest coming in here, where Duluth, because they have a longer cross runway, they were able to keep.
Oh, how long is our cross runway?
It's a...
4,000?
Yeah, I think it's 4,000 feet, and I think with, it may be a little bit displaced on the end, I think it might be 3,800 right now, so it's very short, would not accommodate the jet service that we have. We need a minimum of, I believe it's 6,500 for that jet.
Well, with that kind of a discrepancy, up to 7,000 is probably not financially feasible to create a cross runway, I suppose. No?
I don't think we would, we would have to pay for it all ourselves, I don't think the FAA would give us some money, because we don't have enough traffic to consider that.
All right. Thank you.
Further discussions with regard to the resolution on the grant agreement for the airport improvement? Question?
Aye.
No vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the grant agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number nine under new business is a resolution also approving the Minnesota Department of Transportation Grant Agreement for the Terminal Expansion Project. This would be Phase Two, and it would authorize the signatures for that grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation.
I move.
Motion by Councilor Jackson?
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion.
I only have one item here, and we already discussed it, but I do think that it needs to be mentioned for public information. Item number two, local share of 41.9, that money has already been received, and it's sitting in our coppers, so we're not looking at an additional contribution from the city coppers or the county coppers.
That's correct. The, the terminal project is taken as a whole, even though we're doing it in two phases, the monies that the city and county have contributed to the overall terminal project then is covered here in the second phase, so we've already put in our local share. And so between the discretionary monies that we were receiving from the Federal Aviation Administration, and the $3 million bond issue that the state of Minnesota approved in this last legislative session, we will have sufficient funds for Phase Two.
And Phase Two is the TSA office?
That would be, no, it would be TSA office, the Customs and Border Protection, the airport, or the air, Weather Bureau, Weather Bureau Office, and an office for the Airport Commission.
So, oh, you don't have an office now, do you? Okay.
So we keep everything at KITA right now?
And of those entities, they all pay rent except for the border?
That's correct.
They all pay rent except for the border?
Customs and Border Protection do not pay for their area.
And there was considerable time spent trying to figure out how this was going to be built, because Customs and Border Protection say, "This is what you got to have, it's got to be so many square feet, blah, blah, blah," so there's, there's no way of getting around it.
So, you know, I am about alternative revenue streams, you've heard me on the subject. How much do we get from rent on those, from the entities that do pay? You don't know offhand.
Right offhand.
TSA was considerable.
It's very considerable, and, and I don't remember, if it's $700 a month from the Weather Bureau, it's, it's hundreds of dollars every month. Oh, we, we have reviewed that from time to time, yes. We also want those services here, so.
I will say this, having worked out there, that, that folks that fly in here, they fly in here because of the service they do get through TSA and Border Protection, more so than that they would get at larger airports, and they appreciate, and that's why they come here, so.
Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
No vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and agreement will be approved. Thank you. Any other new business?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I don't know if it's any new business, new business exactly, but I wanted you to hear an update about the, I wanted the public to hear it too, on the citywide cleanup that Saturday.
Well, that comes under reports of committees.
Okay, fine.
So we'll conclude new business, and we go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads, city administrator.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, I've been working closely with Kelly Myers on these blight issues, we've got one property that's, I think, coming down later this week, and we have two others that we've reached agreements with the property owners for a timeline to get those cleaned up, so it looks like we should get a few more done this fall yet, so.
That's good news.
Yes, it is good news. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate your working with Kelly on that, getting some of those cleaned up. Neighbors will be very pleased. Chief Maston? I saw Betty here once.
She was here.
She was here, okay. And finance director, anything for the council? Thank you. We'll move to reports of mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Councilor Jackson?
So Saturday is the citywide cleanup. Brian Briggs is graciously donating his trailer, and the other usual suspects are making this possible, which, which, who would be? Levi Pearson, property development and construction, and Brian Nelson, and I'm trying to think of his business right offhand, but I can't, but anyway, Brian Nelson, and of course, at the top is Friends Garbage and Wayne Fuller from the county. In addition to that, I think we have about eight people from the city councils, or not the city council, but the student council of the high school coming, as well as Beth Slitinsky's, you know, Cape group, and members of the housing, of the residential and commercial building advisory committee, and God, who else am I missing? I think I, anyway.
Got a good crew.
Yeah, we have a very good crew. We're changing the process a little this time, because we found that we were overwhelmed with pickup requests, so this time we tried to limit it to people who have limited mobility or disabled people, so our, our requests have, our weight are too low now, I mean, we're trying to find a happy medium. So we won't have many pickups to do on Saturday, which is a disappointment to me, I was trying to find something that we could manage, and I think we've gone too far the other way. And, but I think we're going to have a good turnout. I wanted to mention KGHS, KSDM, we did an interview with them, they're doing a very cheap rate for us on radio ads, and, so thank you for that coverage, and so, and we have ads in the newspaper as well, very well done, I got some nice compliments on that, those ads. So I think we're covered as far as getting the word out. We did not do flyers this time in order to save costs, so it'll be interesting to see just what kind of response we get, but, so thank you.
I think it's important, too, just so that people realize about the fact that you have to be a city resident and have to show an ID, just so we kind of alleviate that being a problem, that people think, just anybody think they can go there and dump. You have to be a city resident, and you have to show ID or a water bill, or, I believe it says in the brochure.
City residents are team players when it comes to supporting region, the region here, and so I think the council's pretty delighted to be able to show this, that it pays to live in the city, right? You get special Bennys.
Well, I want to, I want to compliment you and your group, because, because we've been through it a number of times, but you've gotten it down to a pattern that allows people to get in and out in a very orderly and, and a reasonable amount of time, and I think that's important, and that's kudos to, to the committee that you're, that you're working with, and I've heard very good comments from city residents that it's a great opportunity for them, too, so.
And it helps a little with cleanups and blight.
It helps our blight, right, so.
So, yeah, as far as organization goes, Joe Schwartz sort of headed that site prep up and did a really good job, and Larry Davison was collecting pickups till Wednesday the following week last time, so he's gone above and beyond board, too.
Very successful. Thank you for your efforts. Further, under council committees, boards, and commissions. Any none? You have the mayor's report in writing before you. Go to the audience again, anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Not note the correspondence, and that there will be a special city council meeting on Monday, September the 25th, next week at 1:00 PM to adopt the budget, so that it can be sent to the, the state by September 30th. And the next regular city council meeting is Monday, October the 2nd at 4:30 PM. Anything further to come before the city council? Any none? Will stand adjourned. Thank you.